Mr. Hughes.
Hello and welcome back to the San Juan County Council's Tuesday, September 29th, regularly scheduled council meeting. We are in our afternoon portion of today's meeting. We had finished up the morning session with approval of the Housing Advisory Committee fund applications. Our next discussion point or subject will be fee resolution for the vacation rental certificate of compliance with Erica Shook, Director of Community Development. Erica, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Hi, Erica.
Hello. So, I'm going to share my screen because I have a staff report. I see the staff report wasn't attached to the agenda, so I did email it out to all of you to make sure. Hopefully, you've got it. It's fairly short. Let me share my screen so the members of the public can see what everybody is looking at. So, this is my staff report. I'm just going down to the middle part. There's background information on what it actually costs us based on our time tracking to do our compliance certificates for 2019. It's always 2018 and 2019 are going to be the biggest amount of time that we spend because we're busy getting the system up and running and cleaning up our old data and getting things. And we're, I think, this last, we are now open up for the 2020 vacation rental certificates of compliance online, and I'll send an email out. But I think we're a lot more organized than we were in the last two years, so it'll just get faster and faster. But it cost us in 2019 about $101,400 to do all of the compliance certificates. This probably doesn't capture all of the time we spent doing this and getting all of it set up. It's rare that we capture everything in our accounting software. We're just, not everybody remembers when they're working on something to put their time in. So, we had 600, and as of April 30th, we had 632 certificates that had been submitted. And that, so that was about $160 per certificate that the effort cost us to do this. And then, you can see that I've done an estimate for what I think the code enforcement for the 170 non-compliant vacation rentals will be, and that's $70,000. That's because we could issue notice of violation for each of those non-compliant vacation rentals, which would generate $85,000 if we dinged everybody and then actually collected that amount. And so, the cost per permit, so we have 932 permits out there as of April 30th, would have been about $184 per permit. Now, my original recommendation was that we, is down here, was that we do a fee of $175 per year and that we discount for online submittals significantly because the online submittals really are much faster for us to process and review, much less data entry on our part. So, we should really encourage that with our fees. You've also received the advice from the Prosecuting Attorney's Office that says we cannot include our enforcement in the fees. So, his, the recommendation there is that we charge no more than $152 for every certificate submitted online and $160 per certificate submitted on paper or hard copy. So, I would recommend that we do something along those lines. And I guess, conceptually, I would say we should be looking at a paper fee that costs more than an online submittal. And then, I nominally put a $25 late fee in here. I think we should talk about it, whether or not there is any grace period for folks, like if they submit in January. Technically speaking, if you didn't submit by December 31st and you're out of compliance, we could issue a notice of violation on January 1st or January 2nd that was $500. So, I mean, that's sort of a default late fee. But if you would like, I could go back and work with the Prosecuting Attorney's Office to look at what seems like maybe a different late fee and how we might structure that. But anyway, I'm happy to entertain any questions. I figured that we would have, you would discuss and give you some direction today, and I would bring back a final product at maybe your next meeting.
So, Erica, how many certifications do you have coming in after December 31st?
I don't know. I'd have to go look. But we, they trickle in. We probably got, oh, we probably are up to, like, since April 30th, we have been getting people who, "Oh, I didn't know I was in, not in compliance. Can I turn it in?" Or, "I didn't know I need to do it every year." And, I don't know, I think we're maybe up to 660, so maybe we've received 30 in the last six months. And probably, we received, they probably trickled in at probably the same rate. Maybe there's a total of 100 that came in late.
Wow.
The most. I think people expect a little bit of a grace period, and I think as long as you've, you know, are giving them a couple days or a month, it's kind of like when you do your tabs for your car and you forget. They ding you pretty good after about two weeks.
I never, I never file my tab late. Interesting.
Mr. Stevens, do you have any thoughts?
Me?
Yes, sorry.
Well, on that late fee, John, are you talking about going back and talking to John about that? Or, because he didn't really have, I didn't see anything in his memo about that.
Yes. That's, I was going to go back because I did think, so really, the default late fee at this point is a notice of violation and $500, right?
So, a $500 late fee, well, that's for your end certification.
That's, yeah. That's the default. And what I was concerned, what I started, when I started looking at this and I said, and I was thinking the $25 fee, I was thinking for people who, maybe it's in January, you know, they're a couple days late or something. I mean, that's, you know, a little bit of grace period is, is nice. I mean, it's a lot of work for us to go issue a notice of violation. So, but I wanted, when I looked at, I was thinking about that issue, I did want to make sure that that $25 late fee doesn't negate any of our code enforcement or that $500 fine. So, I think it would be good for me to go back and just, and talk over the Prosecuting Attorney's Office, how we might structure that to be most effective.
Yeah. So, I'd say, I'd say $25 per month. So, give them a 30-day grace period, and if they haven't done it by January 30, whatever, then boom, you hit them with a $25 late fee. And if they haven't done it by the end of February, it's another $25. And if they haven't done it by the end of March, it's another $25. And then, you can choose when you issue an NOV for $500.
Okay. I can, I can work with that.
I mean, I don't know. That's just an idea, Mr. Stevens and Hughes.
Well, I was just wondering, then, when would you do the notice of violation?
When she felt like it.
Well, maybe it's six months.
Yeah. I mean, yeah. I mean, it's, it's clearly when, it's not that, you know, the post office is late or any of that kind of thing, right? It's like, okay, you really haven't remembered to file your certification, so you're in, you know, you're now, you're now in violation of the, of the ordinance, of your permit.
I support, I mean, I support everything that's here. I mean, I wish we could charge more annually, but I support what we have here.
And why, you know, John choosing that one part of the code that says we can only charge as much as it costs to process, but why is it more like a business license or a, you know, why isn't it a fee for the luxury of being able to do that?
I can, I can ask that question.
Because it's land use, I think.
So, Erica, can we charge, so maybe this gets to the late fee, but if we start the compliance, can we not charge that $184 that it costs to do the enforcement per NOV? Or, that's the $500?
That's the $500 bucks.
That is the $500.
Yeah.
And that's already in the enforcement code, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's the generic notice of violation for any permit violation for land use. Correct?
That is correct. I think the Planning Commission, when they were talking about vacation rentals at their last meeting, was wondering whether or not we should have a special expedited revocation, you know, process in our code or special code enforcement in our code. So, you could also pair that with a sliding scale for penalties of some sort.
I'm going to keep it simple.
Yeah.
So, Erica, do you have enough direction from us on this? I think it seems like we're supportive of the direction you've gone. And maybe instead of $152, it's $150, so it's a round number?
Yeah. Yes, that's what I was going to suggest. You make it 150. I'd rather give them the $8 difference plus the credit card processing fee.
Right.
Or, we might advertise that it's $152, but when they go back into the system, they're paying $150 plus $2 of the processing fee. So, the end result is $152.
Right. And then, 160 for a hard application?
Yes.
Yeah. I support all this.
Yeah. Thanks, Erica. That was a lot of work to parse all that out.
Yeah. Yes. Yes. We had to collect, the hardest part is getting everybody consistently putting things in.
Tracking time.
Tracking time is difficult. Everybody's been really good about it.
If you could maybe work on the, you know, what, if the 20, if the late fee is acceptable to, you know, with the Prosecuting Attorney's Office, and then maybe some kind of a, how the NOV would work consistently across everyone. You know, kind of Bill said the $25 late fee that gets accrued over the months up until that, then an automatic NOV is sent at six months or three months, whatever it is.
Yep. I think that's a great idea. We've been sort of struggling with how we decide to implement that. So, I will, we'll, I'll work with the Prosecuting Attorney's Office, and we'll come back with something that, a resolution that amends the fees and consistent with your direction.
Great. Is 10-13 or October 13th an okay date to have you come back?
I think so. I think it's going to depend on the, being able to work with, with John and his work schedule. But I would think so.
On the agenda for October 13th, and if for whatever reason, you know, between you and John, it's not possible, just let us know, and we'll push it out to the next meeting?
Yep. We'll do that.
Is that okay with council?
Yep.
Yeah.
And we could do two touches on this, right? So, I think, right, it's just a resolution, so.
Right.
That's correct.
All right.
Great. Thank you, Erica. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good work, Erica. Thank you. All right. Our next, Mr. Thomas, are you on the phone?
I am.
And Mr. Wolf?
I'm here.
Excellent. Our next item, which is, it's marked number six on the agenda, is a discussion non-represented wage scale proposal with Mike Thomas, County Manager, and James Wolfe, Human Resource Manager. Mr. Thomas?
I'll let James go through his PowerPoint with you to start off the conversation.
So, can you see my screen?
Yep.
Okay. And so, basically, I wanted to just present a couple of concepts regarding the salaried and non-represented hourly pay scales. Just some background, you know, we've talked a lot over the past couple of years about the status quo of our current structure with the percentage increase between steps is just not sustainable. The actual and budgeted payroll excluding benefits have increased by an average of almost 6% per year from December of 2015. And the actual and budgeted sales tax has increased with only, only 3.6% during that time. So, even with a strong 2019, the trend is worrisome. You can see by that chart that there's the, the trend line shows that we get into some significant negative numbers, you know, potentially for this year in 2020 and possibly beyond. The Seattle CPIU through August of 2020, looking at one year of data, also shows a trend line that's moving in a negative direction. So, the June CPIU was at a .9, came back up a little bit in August to a 1.6. We don't know if that might be, you know, a little blip because of some of the reopening that had happened in Seattle, Bellevue, and Everett. So, you know, the
James, can I ask you a question?
But the, again, the trend line is looking that, at least for the past year, that we'll be at about a .5 CPIU as of December. Did I hear, Rick, did you say you had a question?
Just a clarification question. So, the dotted red line is basically the average. If you took all the data points for each of the months, and that, that gives you that project, that downward projection, correct?
Well, it's, it's, it's a trend line, and it's a, you know, it's a calculation that's done, you know, in Excel that basically says, here's the direction that we've seen to be going in.
Great. Thank you.
So, our current status, the current hourly wage scale is using the 2020 data that we, that we accumulate from the Association of Washington Cities and Counties. And the Milliman Report for Public Agencies for Washington State shows that our current wage scale is 1.25% behind the market average. But we are above the market median at .59, or basically, we're right on market median. As you know, with our negotiations with Council Two, Local 1849, they wish to target the 75th percentile. So, currently, we're at 4.42% behind the 75th percentile. So, I propose a new 11-step scale that does get to the 71st percentile. It's a little shy of the goal, but it's something that would be affordable. And this is the same wage scale that was proposed to the union during our negotiations that are currently ongoing. So, this is what that scale looks like. We would move from seven steps to 11 steps. That would be much more sustainable in the long term. The migration from where employees are now to where they would go in this step would, would be that no one, they would move to the, the range in step that's closest to where they're at now, but would not be less than what they're at now. So, anyone went through a migration wouldn't see any kind of a reduction in pay. Again, it gets us closer to the 75th percentile at the 71st percentile. The percentage of, between steps, this was basically what the union had proposed to us, was a declining percentage between each step. So, it ranges from a 3.6% between steps one and two and 3.5 between steps two and three to 1.7 between steps nine and 10 and 1.6 between steps 10 and 11. But the overall average between each steps comes out to 2.65%. And everyone would maintain their current step anniversary date. So, do you have any questions on the non-represented proposal as presented?
Hey, James, this is Mike. Maybe we talked a little bit about, it's a fairly small subset that are hourly non-represented. I forget how many employees, but I think it's only a handful.
Yes. It's, it's, it's less than a dozen.
Okay.
For the hourly, or, I'm excuse me, for the salaried employees, this is primarily management and professional and technical employees. When we agreed with the union to do the comp study in 2018 using our available data, they insisted that, that we use the same comparators for management that we use for the bargaining unit. And we, we agreed to that. But using those same comparators and the same structure, the current salaried wage scale is 9.87% behind the market average, 7.63 behind median, and 21.26% behind the 75th percentile. As a matter of fact, our current scale actually equals the 29th percentile, which would mean is, basically, is of all the comparators, 71% pay more than what we do and 29% pay less. So, the new proposed 11-step does, is able to get us to the 55th percentile, or basically right at the market average. And that's what this scale is here. Very similar in structure with, you've got 13 ranges, 11 steps, and the percentage between steps is also 2.65%. So, it does get us closer to that compensation study group's recommendation of targeting the 75th percentile, even though really it's, we're, we're pretty far short at the 55th. But it's, but anything higher, we just can't afford. There's just no way that we can get any closer to that. But it is a big improvement over the 29th percentile. And again, it also maintains the current step anniversary date. So, what we're looking for, council, is basically is, we don't really need you to take any action today, just with kind of a head nod agreement. We would include these wage scales in the revised 21, 2021 budget proposal, and we would include them in the 2021 staffing levels pay and benefit plan resolution that we present in the end of November, early December.
James, this is Jamie. So, this would just migrate in as people's anniversary dates?
Or? We, the, the plan would be is, is that we would implement it on December 25th, which is the first day of the new, of the 2021 year. People would move to their new step and then, as part of that migration. For most people, that's just a few cents. And then they would just, and then they would go to their next step on their, their normal anniversary date.
All right. Any other questions from council?
Yeah. So, Councilman Watson here. So, did I notice right that the comparators for the salaried personnel is different than the comparators for the hourly non-represented?
No, they are the exact same comparators.
Okay. All right. Because you were talking about the 2018 study on the
Yeah. The 2018 study determined what the comparators were. And then, all, all we've done is, is since we, since we own the data, we update it for 2019 or 2020, still using the exact same comparators.
Okay. All right. So, same comparators for both the non-represented hourly and the non-represented salaried?
Yes.
Okay. Great.
And, and those are the same comparators for the represented hourly.
For the, yeah, for the negotiate, right. Well, for the current negotiations, right?
Yes.
Right. Okay. Nope. No other questions?
I don't have any others.
Then
Do you like this to be brought to the 10-13 council meeting?
I think we, I'm willing to head nod that we should do this for planning purposes for '21 and like to see what that means to the '21 budget, right?
Yeah, I agree.
Before we, before we fully implement, we should at least understand what it would do to the budget.
So, is that something that we can, what's the timing on that, working with Myleene?
Well, we
Go ahead, Mike.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. We've, we've been working with Myleene. And so, yeah, this, this head nod is kind of affirmation of the parameters for, for figuring out the position budgeting and then, and also COLA, which I'll talk about in a second. So, I think the important thing is, this is, this recommendation mirrors what was offered to the union. And then, you know, at the root of the conversation was about right sizing the size of steps to our ability to pay. So, we've talked about this in a number, a number of times before, but again, just putting the final form in front of you. So, a head nod means that these are going to be our operating budget assumptions, and you'll likely see them, as James said, in the, one of the final pieces that we pass as part of the budget is the staffing pay scale resolution at the end of the year.
Hi, this is Myleene. I just joined by Skype.
Hi, I'm Myleene.
As I understand it, what you're saying today is you're going to apply the new wage scales to just the handful of non-rep hourly employees. Is that correct?
And salaried. And salaried.
Okay. I thought we'd already discussed that. Okay. Yes, I can, I have a pretty good sense of what the effect will be.
Okay.
So, I just, just to confirm from council, there's a head nod to see where this will take, especially for the planning side, correct?
Yeah.
Right.
James, anything else on what you presented?
Yeah. Well, I think I'm going to kind of defer over to Mike to talk about the next topic on your agenda, which is the COLA, you know, or any cost of living adjustment. So, I put up on, on your screen, you can see, you know, basically, again, the, the trend line for the Seattle CPIU. You know, so there's two considerations that I think you need to look at with the, when making a recommendation for COLA. You know, one of them is, is, you know, where is it going? You know, what are we looking at as far as the Consumer Price Index and, you know, price increases? And, you know, as importantly or maybe more importantly, what can we afford? So, you know, Mike, I will, I will turn the microphone.
Yeah. So, thank you, James. So, it's, as part of the, the budget process, we talk about COLA, and we do that kind of in the context of, you know, it's a cost of living adjustment. So, that ties into a conversation with CPI and some other indicators. So, we take a look at what's going on with the Consumer Price Index via the Bureau of Labor Statistics. So, if you look at the BEV statistics that exist on that side in many forms, you see relatively low inflation pressure. So, as James noted, between August of 19 and August of this year, you know, it's 1.3 to 1.6% changeover. So, that means between August 19 and August 20, consumer prices increased a little over 1%, 1%. There was, of course, a large and negative drag on the economy in March, April, and May. Some sectors like transportation and fuel were, were very negative. But the takeaway isn't, there isn't too much inflation pressure at the moment. The other thing that we deal with this time of year is when we get into the levy discussion, the State Department of Revenue takes a look at inflation for the following year's property taxes. And so, they just sent out a letter on September 25th saying that the rate of inflation for property taxes due in 2021 is .602%. So, we'll be in a position this year on the levies to pass not only the levy resolution, but also another separate resolution that says, because of circumstance, we want to take the full 1% property tax. So, that's that implicit, implicit price deflator inflation mechanism. So, in short, what I'm saying is that there isn't much inflation pressure, whether measured CPI or measured through the IPD. So, and then, as James said, it's also premised on ability to pay. So, my recommendation So my recommendation would be zero COLA in twenty twenty one. The other thing I'll note is that, I think, Ask Me, the Guild, and everyone else got a two point five percent COLA this year. So folks have kept up with inflation yet again via the budget. So just a quick discussion of looking at a few different indicators and not seeing much inflation pressure over the course of the last year and going forward for the remainder of the year. So it doesn't doesn't make a good case for applying any kind of COLA. So just something we're we're watching on, and as as we did with the last presentation on wages, you know, we're looking for a head nod from council to agree with an operating assumption for budget calculation purposes of using a zero percent COLA for nonreps. As you know, we're still in a wage discussion with Ask Me on wages and the contract in general, so a COLA hasn't been set for them. On the Guild side, they do have a two point three percent COLA per their contract for twenty twenty one.
Just to clarify, what you're suggesting at this point is a zero percent COLA for nonrepresented management for the twenty twenty one budget, correct?
Correct.
All right. Mr. Watson, any questions?
No, so I think that's, you know, zero percent would be a good assumption from a budget planning perspective, and then obviously we'll be tracking the next couple of months here. But I guess this only comes out every every other month?
Actually, it's tracked every month. The BLS tracks inflation every month.
Okay.
So I think the next would come out, oh, gosh, I don't know, they actually have a publication schedule, but they do record it every month. I think we have to wait till October to get the September numbers.
Right, right. Okay, so anyways, so let's keep let's keep tracking it, and obviously, as we get close to the end of the year, then we could always adjust things if we need to. But for planning purposes, zero is fine with me.
I think we should plan on zero. It's, you know, the revenues are so far off this year.
And I would agree. So that's a head nod. Mr. Thomas, is there anything else you'd like from us?
No, we've got we've got the direction we needed today. Thank you.
And just for clarification, again, Mike, one more time, so the the wage stuff that James, the wage scale proposal that James provided is exactly what was presented to Ask Me, correct?
Yeah, there's there's a little nuanced difference in how the the two point six percent increase per step is derived. I think in the the management nonrep scale, it's static, and then, as James pointed out, in the represented, there's that change in step. So basically, it's larger at the front end than the tail end of the range, but overall, it's the same two point six five percent.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Is there anything else from council or James or Mike on the subject?
Nope.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, James.
Thank you, James.
Thank you, James, and Mike, and Myleene. All right, so our next subject is discussion resolution, diversity, equity, and inclusion with council. Council, I asked Ingrid to forward a revision last night. When we have talked about this in the past, there was basically three different sections. The first page is Mr. Watson's comments to one of the last drafts. The second group of pages is the resolution that was presented by Mr. Carter and some of the folks that were there for that presentation. And the third sheet that was sent last night basically is is the resolution portion that just talks about, you know, what our vision and plan would be for how we work in this county and all of the items, I think, Mr. Stevens or Mr. Watson, one of the two, you pointed out that the sixteen items really kind of veered off from what the original sort of resolution vision is and that we look at them separately. So my my plan today or my thought today was to discuss the the latest revision on is this something that we could move forward either today or in the future, or something that we could approve, talk briefly about Mr. Watson's items. And then what I was interested in on the items that we pulled off was to contact the sheriff formally in a just in a letter, as well as the county manager, to find out where we are with these points. So these points were brought forward to the by the community on things that we wanted to question, and I was just interested to find out, like, where are we? Is the sheriff, the sheriff has had, I've had some conversation with the sheriff, and he seems to say that the county is either in the process of or has completed or is working to complete several of these items. So I really wanted just to get a clarification, and I think you both had suggested in the future that these were kind of competing elements within a document. So I wanted to kind of strip it back to the really the vision portion of the resolution and see if that's something that either one of you could support or would be willing to move forward with.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes, sir.
So I just want to.
Lost your mic.
Lost your mic.
Original documents, so the top part, let me just, the resolve, kind of the whereas stuff, but then pages three through seven are the original list of eleven different items. So was there another document?
No, so this, okay, Mike, the second document is the original resolution, and there's one, two, three, there's three pages of content, and the signature page is the fourth page. So there was the the list of on the on page two of the original document, it says be it further resolved, and it talks about from equity to accountability. So I left that the first page and a half in and then removed the second part of page two and all of page three.
Okay.
Does that make sense? So there's sixteen items that we that I removed out of this that I felt were more, I don't know if you call them ordinances or direct direction versus a vision of how we want to be or how we may want to be. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
So I appreciate the revision that was sent out or either this morning or last night. That's the, what is it, two pages?
Yes, the page and a half of content plus signatures.
Yeah. And I could I could support that, which is kind of where I went the last time we talked about it. I think it's also worth noting, if you were going to talk to the sheriff and and the others, is Bill's comments that he had put out, which, again, are kind of more action things, but what that possibility might be.
Great, thank you. I mean, I support that as well. I just wanted to kind of separate this into different parts like you suggested originally, Jamie.
Yeah, no, that's that's fine. I just wanted, since you brought it all up as kind of a separate part, I just thought I'd go through what what I thought we should consider or not.
Bill, would you mind spending some time and go through your seven points? We can, I mean, I appreciate you taking the time and sending it, but, you know, just elaborate a little bit?
Yeah, no problem. So what I did was, you know, I went through the original resolution, and I was, you know, looking at things that they were suggesting be done. So, you know, the first one that jumped off the page to me was about employee education, right? You know, the type of behavior and values that the county organization expresses through the actions of its employees, and that led me to saying, okay, that's like employee education and training. So, you know, do we or do we not offer training opportunities for the staff in the areas of diversity, systemic racism, you know, you know, equity and and those kinds of things? And so, you know, that could be something easily that our Human Resources Department could add to our, you know, ongoing employee education training list and, you know, try to start addressing that on an ongoing basis versus a resolution, right? So that was one idea I thought was trying to address, you know, I'll call it actions of county personnel, right, was a training opportunity. Another clear message I got from, in fact, citizen comments was this idea of a bilingual liaison, right, that the county should have. And I actually modified that a bit and said, well, if people are afraid to, you know, interface with the county because of of threat of whatever, you know, dealing with government, putting a bilingual liaison as a county employee didn't solve the problem. I saw, you know, doing that via a bilingual liaison in the Family Resource Center, which, again, many of these citizens may be already dealing with family resource centers. It's also at least one one layer indirect away from the government, and therefore people might be, you know, more comfortable dealing with that. And so I came up with the thought of saying, okay, we I would think we might be able to find some grant funding to give to the three family resource centers to, you know, so they can offer a bilingual liaison service to our our local citizens. Again, totally separate and, you know, opportunity that maybe Health and Community Services could look into. So then I took the, you know, the sheriff comments and the whole Use of Force Review Committee, and I thought, well, you know, that's certainly a conversation we can have with the sheriff. My understanding is right now it's only members of the sheriff's department that sits on that review committee, and, you know, should we not have, you know, again, I suggested county manager and maybe an independent citizen or two sit on that review committee? I've heard or read, you know, conflicting perspectives on that from, you know, non-police personnel don't understand and therefore, you know, can't really contribute to the committee, whereas, you know, on the flip side, no, no, you absolutely need, you know, non-police personnel sitting on these things. So but at the very least, you know, certainly, the county manager representing, in effect, the county council would, I think, and, you know, an independent citizen with appropriate qualifications might make sense. And again, that would be a conversation to have with Sheriff Krebs versus, you know, trying to dictate something to him. Again, I, you know, our HR department can certainly review our Personnel Policy Manual and make sure it's up to snuff relative to diversity and racism and, you know, verbal, you know, whatever. And so make sure that it covers all the appropriate topics from a behavior and values perspective. And I believe our Personnel Policy Manual is the manual that should direct, you know, the do's and don'ts of personnel behavior. The next item was, you know, I believe we're already an equal opportunity employer. You know, it never hurts to review that and make sure that we're doing everything we can. We don't actually go out and do targeted recruiting to say, per se, at least that's my understanding. So and I don't think, frankly, San Juan County is big enough and warrants the need to go out and do targeted recruiting, but at least make sure that we're doing, you know, that we are truly an equal employment opportunity employer. And then, you know, purchasing, yeah, great, you know, we can talk to the departments that do purchasing and make sure that, you know, we are doing, I think, allowing for a premium for local businesses, but also, you know, that we encourage minority owned or opportunities where appropriate. So that was sort of my, you know, take the big resolution and break it down into specific elements in specific areas within the county and, you know, could be delegated to various individuals to actually take the action on. And I think truly accomplish something relative to the values being expressed in the proposed original resolution.
All right. Thank you for your comments and for putting the work in on that. I appreciate it. So, Bill, are you, could you support what Mr. Stevens says regarding the the revision that came in with just sort of the vision of the resolution today? You're on mute?
Thank you. So I'm looking at the revised for discussion version of the document, correct?
Correct.
All right. So, yeah, that that looked good to me, other than the leaming in the value list. The next to last one. I think we're supposed to talk about learning there, not leaming.
Oh, oh, yeah. My the my document says learning, we believe everyone can learn and achieve to high standards.
Okay, well, mine says leaming, L E A M I N G. So.
It was corrected, Ingrid said she corrected it.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Bill, always, always love your proofreading skills, because I can't even see that.
Well, word flagged it for me, so. But no, fundamentally, you know, the whereas is the resolution and the values I have no problem with, and, you know, if you want to pass a resolution, then great. I would still, I don't think that will conflict with any other existing.
I don't, I don't think it will either.
I don't think it will either.
Right. So I mean, that which was my main concern with the original proposal was going, well, wait a minute, you know, we've got PPMs and we've got, you know, ordinances and legislations and laws, and wait a minute, let's, you know, make sure that we're not either conflicting or reaffirming, which then means we're going to get out of date, because, you know, you don't want two things saying the same thing.
Right, and I, Bill, I think your six points, that's a lot of work in those six points, and I'm not comfortable today really talking about how to address them. I think I appreciate your thoughts, and that needs to be the next step, maybe. But I really would like to have something, if council would support it, a resolution passed on the vision part, and I appreciate both of you saying you could could move forward that. So if it's all right, I would entertain a motion, then I would follow up with you, Bill, on your points on a way to address and kind of try to answer some of them.
And that's fine with me. Again, you know, I think, you know, between Human Resources and and Mr. Thomas and, you know, you said, you know, you'd be willing to actually initiate a conversation with the sheriff, you know, those are some simple things that would move these items along.
Yeah, my thought was to draft a letter to both, you know, HR and the county manager and to the sheriff to ask, where are we with this right now? Is this a change or are we achieving that already? Or, you know, what is the plan for modification if it is, et cetera?
Right. So, Mr. Hughes?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I would suggest that that we have a that we have a meeting, whether it's you or Bill, and some staff to go through the list. There's some stuff that we've covered, some stuff that needs explanation, and some stuff that we that are great ideas that should be planned into the workload for next year. So I think having a general conversation at the front end would help us move forward.
Fine with me.
All right, great, thank you.
Even better.
Yeah. All right, I would entertain a motion for approval of the resolution.
I got to find it again.
Well, I want to make sure I call it the right thing, too, right?
I move approval of San Juan County Resolution affirming commitment to a safe and inclusive community.
Revised for discussion on September thirtieth. Or no, revised.
Twenty nine.
Twenty, yeah.
As revised for nine twenty nine.
Thank you. Seeing how there's multiple versions running around, I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second for approval of a resolution, San Juan County Resolution affirming commitment to a safe and inclusive community as revised September twenty ninth and presented as the revised copy in today's meeting. Is there any further discussion?
Nope. Nope.
Nope.
I just appreciate the work on this from both of you. Thank you very much. Um, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries three zero. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I wish I could have turned my camera around fast enough. There was a jet that just flew, since you all know I'm in my kitchen and I'm looking out at the water. It was below the, um, skyline of San Juan Island going along the water. And it was, uh, military gray and it made no noise as it went by.
Mr. Stevens, do you want us to reach out to the Navy and ask about that?
I'm going to ask how it made no noise and see if we could get a few more.
Yeah, really. But you didn't see a flash, right?
They'll, they'll ask us if it's ours.
Yeah. How do you know it was ours?
Do you have a new, uh, stealth jet that the county's using?
I don't know. I, I had to mention it in case you hear about it, but it was like really weird.
Oh, thank, thank you for sharing. Um, all right, well, I'll let you ask the Navy if you'd like and we'll, all right. Well, thank you very much. Um, is Erica, are you on the, on the line still?
Yes, I'm here. I left and came back.
We have another item, uh, we have scheduled public hearing on shoreline master program ordinance for Tuesday, October 27th at nine fifteen AM.
That's correct. Um, at your last meeting on the shoreline master program, you, um, approved a version to get sent to the Department of Ecology. Um, they have approved it last Thursday. They sent us an email. They approved it with no changes.
What?
Yes. So thank you to Adam and Linda Color.
Clearly we did something wrong.
Hard work on it. And so we would like to set, um, the final hearing date for local adoption of October 27th. Um, we would be getting that hearing notice into the paper this week. Um, so that's what this is about. Um, they, they made no changes and the next, what we would do is we would locally adopt it on the 27th, um, and then we would send it to, um, the Department of Ecology and they would do, uh, they would do an adoption process, um, and let us know. And then 30 days after they approve it or adopt it, it becomes effective. So just a little bit of a convoluted process, but.
So Erica, if you don't mind and you don't need to re-attend, uh, but I'd like to put it for a second touch on the 13th and we'll just mention it and go on, but then we can hit a three touch on this since it is an ordinance, correct?
Yes, yes. We'll bring it back on the 13th. All we're doing today is, uh, setting the hearing date for the 27th.
So, Mr. Chair, I move we set a public hearing on the shoreline master program ordinance for Tuesday, October 27th at nine fifteen AM.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to schedule a public hearing on the shoreline master program ordinance for Tuesday, October 27th at nine fifteen AM. Any discussion or comments? Uh, seeing all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Erica. Motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Um, all right. So we're now moving on to council member, uh, and county manager updates. Uh, Mr. Stevens, I know you have been incredibly busy. It just, for whatever it's worth, if you wouldn't mind giving us a brief update, I know you sit on three to four hours a day of Zoom calls with WASAC and other entities and we, we kind of have blown over, um, you know, these council member updates, but I know how much time you're spending on it and I don't, you know, we don't have to get into super detail, but I think it's important that people know how hard you're working on the county's behalf in Olympia from Lopez. Um, if, I don't, I don't mean to put you in a spot, but I know you've been working really hard on a lot of stuff, so if you care to share, that'd be great.
Of course, this is the one day I didn't have all my, a whole bunch of notes.
All right, sorry, we just don't have, we can touch it later. I just, I just want to make sure that people know, I mean, I, I complain about the, the number of meetings I sit in, but I know you're literally in it all day long, um, almost every day, so I want to thank you for that work.
So there's, I, I could tell you a couple of things. Um, one, well, one I sent out to you guys that, um, indirect costs can't be covered by cares.
Yep.
Which I think originally we thought it could, at least on the phone call I was on, everybody had that idea. Um, and I don't know about, um, on your phone calls, but, you know, on all these proclamations and, and extensions that the governor has done for COVID, um, all have to be agreed on, uh, by the House and Senate leadership. And in my discussions with like our representatives and senator and with a couple others, since they're not really in that loop, I'm not sure if they have a sense of, uh, how far off the revenue is for the state. And, I mean, they're talking about putting in programs for this and that and the other thing that are like so far from, uh, you know, rebounding as a, uh, community or as a state. It just seems like a, a kind of a disconnect. Um, anyway, there's, uh, also I'm going to be sitting in on a briefing on the oil spill response, the legislation that happened last year, uh, getting ecology to come up with some new regulations and also figure out the need, uh, possible need for, or the regulations for, um, uh, towing vessels and tugs, um, in Rosario Strait, but they're also supposed to be looking at Haro, uh, through this study and there should be an update coming up pretty soon. Um, and that's all I've got right now. That, oh, there is a, through the ecosystem coordination board, there is a strong effort going on, uh, at, uh, targeting mainly the GMA, but as looking at how to streamline some of our regulations, some of the state's regulations they put on us considering GMA and the shoreline master plan, which makes it harder and more expensive to do, um, projects and permitting, um, then it helps. And that's getting, seems to be getting a lot of traction in, in different, uh, sectors. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Jamie. Um, Bill? Bill, I think you're on mute.
Uh, no real updates.
All right. Um, thank you very much. Uh, just two quick things on ferries. Um, so we're continuing down. We have, I think, one more meeting, um, with the proviso from, uh, the, uh, Senate Transportation Commissioner or the Joint Transportation Commission on the viability and the economic impact of the Sydney ferry. It's definitely a very interesting, um, conversation because we're all supposed to be objective, but we all have our opinions. There's sort of the camp that wants to privatize and the camp that doesn't want to privatize. And so we've kind of come around in circles. Um, I think Victoria, it's good to note that Victoria Compton has done a really good job defending, um, our ferry system and access to ferries. So we'll, we got a couple more meetings to try to hammer out what the final document will, that will go to the JTC. Um, and then the, and next interesting thing is that, um, I think you guys are aware of this, but the Puget Sound Regional Council was given money from the state to look at passenger only ferries. And we were fortunate enough to have one of the routes that they're doing the, uh, research on is a, at least planned Bellingham to Friday Harbor passenger only ferry route. So they're doing a lot of research for us. Um, uh, Shannon Wilber and, and Christian Corey were on the, on the last little call we had with them that was going over it. And basically they will put together a, a package, a study and present it to our council that will say, if you ever wanted to, you know, operate your own ferry or, or do whatever, here's the, the research that we've done on the viability of this route. So, um, at some point in the future, um, either, uh, end of this year, beginning of next year, um, I would hope that that, uh, that we, definitely a worthwhile study because they think that we could have a profitable route, um, or at least a functional route to come from, uh, to come serve San Juan, hopefully the other islands. So let's just see how that final report comes out. And again, we, the county's been represented in it, but this has all come from their own survey of, and we had one of the highest response rates of this survey, uh, for supporting a passenger only route to our community. So I just want to pass that along. Um, is there anything else, uh, Mike?
Uh, Mr. Hughes, passenger route from where to this community?
Bellingham.
Bellingham. It probably come from the Alaska Ferry Terminal. The, the port there has access, has access. Um, and then so it come from Bellingham and the, the route is, they're, they're providing us the information to Friday Harbor and it'd probably go, the boat size would be somewhere between 50 and 100 passengers in theory. Um, and it would, you could probably go where the clipper has shown up at the end of the pier. Um, we have been advocating for stops on Lopez and Orcas, but again, they're, they're giving us information and research on, on how this system could work and then they hand it to us and we have to, we would decide on our own what we wanted to do with it. It could be something that we put in the shelf and say, that's great, or we could look at, is that an option that the county would like to look at in the future of having some kind of a passenger? So there's no money for operations on this. The money was for a study if it would be a viable transportation alternative for our community. And then again, this came out of the Puget Sound Regional Council, uh, through the, the Senate Transportation Committee.
Okay. Sounds like a good addition to the permanent winter schedule.
I mean, you know, I mean, there's, there's a lot of, that we could do in the future if we wanted to, you know? You could create a ferry route system, you could, uh, anyway, it, it, the fact that we're getting this information on, and to look at it as something that we may want to consider, it's in our transportation plan in the future. And, you know, we're fortunate that the state's paying for the, the research. I think it's a good place to at least look at a document and have a further discussion. I'm not sure exactly when that document will be completed. I think there's one more meeting involved in that process. Um, anything else, Mr. Thomas?
Um, just a couple of things. Um, yeah, it continues to be an interesting year, so we deal with, uh, the budget and, uh, staffing considerations for next year and, um, got the contract done for the sales tax analysis that I talked about a couple of weeks ago, so hope to get that project going. Uh, also hope to get, uh, today or tomorrow, scope of work from Miller Hall on, um, building reuse, uh, study. So as noted earlier, on the HVAC discussion, um, we still have a pending discussion about reducing the number of buildings that we, uh, have in our inventory. Um, the other thing I want to touch on was, um, the reduction in hours. Notice that went out to eighteen, uh, eighteen forty nine membership. I just want to be really clear that it's a reduction in hours. Some folks are using the term layoffs. Uh, it is not layoffs, it's a reduction in hours. Um, so that's a very important distinction. Uh, another thing I want council to know, uh, is that, um, you know, the authority imposed those under the contract is isolated to one month, but as we have told, uh, eighteen forty nine leadership and council two leadership, the county is very interested and willing to enter into a memorandum of, uh, understanding that would, um, give folks a few more months to, to take those seven, uh, equivalent of seven days. So, um, we're ready for the discussion and we hope that we'll be contacted by union leadership to, uh, continue those soon. Now, that's it for me. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Hughes, um, one other thing, I, I sent around to everybody this, uh, article from, uh, I forget where it was from, anyways, on, uh, you know, how will the pandemic end? And, uh, this article was, uh, forecasting that it won't be to at least November of next year before we have sufficient, uh, peoples vaccinated and, uh, um, sufficient, uh, medical, uh, activities in place to really even start to think about what, getting back to, you know, the previous normal was. So, um, for our planning purposes, um, you know, the, uh, life as it is defined today, uh, will probably continue at least until November of next year. That's all presuming that we get, uh, viable vaccines out early next year, i.e. January, February, and that they can produce enough, uh, doses, and it's probably a double dose, uh, i.e. two shots, um, to be able to get sufficient individuals vaccinated and that still presumes that a vaccine will actually make you immune. Um, again, uh, there's some, uh, disagreement as to whether even getting COVID today actually provides you immunity against it, you know, in the future. So, um, so the same kind of question exists relative to vaccinations. So, uh, I thought it was a very good article. It, you know, gave a, uh, you know, tentative timeline kind of deal, which for, from a planning perspective, I was, was very useful. Um, you know, so, uh, I doubt next summer will be the summer, you know, the standard summer yet, um, if we still haven't achieved sufficient herd immunity or whatever the appropriate phrase is, um, going forward. So, um, anyways, I, I encourage you all to read that article. I found it very, very interesting and informative and not that it's absolutely right. I, you know, I don't think anybody can be absolutely right right now, um, but I thought they did a good ti, a good job of laying it out.
Great. Thank you, Bill. And, and Jamie, just a quick question to you following up on what Mr. Watson, um, just mentioned. I have been getting recently, um, inquiries about, you know, the county moving to phase three, and I just want to confirm on the record that the county doesn't have that opportunity at this point. The state has, um, frozen or stopped the phasing system. So to Mr. Watson's point, this is the new norm for a long time or could be. Is that correct, Mr. Stevens? Is that what you've heard?
That, that's what I, that's what I've been telling people and, and every time we've asked, it's like, this is where we are and this is where we're going to be. There's these piecemeal things that are getting changed, like last week, the, uh, other, you know, event center things for weddings and funerals. Um, but it's, it's all coming out of the governor's office right now, particularly why, going back to Mark's presentation, particularly why the numbers aren't where they want them.
Yep.
Okay. Well, I just, I wanted us all to, you know, be at least hearing the same thing because I'm starting to get the, an increase of volume of questions about, you know, when is phase three coming? And my response has been, it's not and it's, and it's out of our control at this point.
Right. And I, um, what was I just going to say on that? Oh, and as far as meeting in person, that's been an ongoing question with the governor's office, um, you know, and Amy's, and the Open Public Meetings Act, but, um, there, I guess there was a, some sort of call this morning where WASAC was asking if, uh, given what they just did on the, uh, other conference centers and things, does, will that change their view on, on meetings in person?
Was there, was there an answer at all or is it just a question?
It was just pushing them on the question, but no answer.
Okay. That was a nice teaser, Jamie. I'm like, and?
And like you said, this is what we got.
Well, I, I hope that, uh, that those who are making the decisions understand when they don't make a decision till the last minute, the impact it has on local government, when we're scrambling to find solutions, um, when something expires. And I understand, what is it called, the four corners or whatever, they have to get that approval, but, um, hopefully people can understand the impact it has on all of us trying to do our job.
Right.
Um, okay, great. Thank you. Um, so is there anything else before we go to appointments?
Not for me.
Not for me.
I think you're the, uh, ag resource person.
Yep. Yep. Mr. Chair, I move we appoint Annie McIntyre to the Agricultural Resource Committee, position number six.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second to appoint Annie McIntyre to the, uh, Ag Resource Committee for position number six. Any questions? Without seeing all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three zero.
Mr. Chair, I move we reappoint Winnie Adams, David Kane and Mike Meisner to the Agricultural Resource Committee.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second to reappoint, uh, Winnie Adams, Dave Kane, David Kane and, uh, Mika, uh, Messner to the Agricultural Resource Committee. Any comments or questions? Without seeing all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, uh, three zero.
Mr. Chair, I move we appoint Laura Rensberry to the Noxious Weed Board for Area Number One, West Orcas.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second to appoint Laura Rensberry to the Noxious Weed Board for Area One, West Orcas. Any comments or questions? Without seeing all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries. Uh, the next appointment is for Orcas Planting Commission, position, uh, I would like to appoint, uh, Nicholas Koniger to the Planting Commission for Orcas, position number seven.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second to appoint Nicholas Koniger to the Planting Commission, Orcas Island, position number seven. Uh, any comments or questions?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three zero. Um, and I'm not sure. I know I, there's one outstanding position for Orcas, but, uh, the, the chair was, or one of the members had mentioned that we needed to make sure. So I don't, are there any other positions that are open for Planting Commission? Are you guys aware of?
Not that I'm aware of.
That I'm aware of.
All right. Well, I continue to try to find someone to fill that position. So, um, hopefully I'll have another point to you as soon as possible.
Great.
Great.
All right. So we have an executive session and a closed session. Um, so Mike, on both the executive and a closed session will actually be taken?
Uh, I do not know for sure. Maybe.
All right. Um, so we will go into an executive session to discuss with legal counsel litigation or potential litigation pursuit to RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one ten one I. Thirty minutes, Mike?
Um, yes. And 20 minutes for the closed session.
Okay, great. And, um, we may come out and, uh, take action. And there's all followed up by a closed session to discuss matters pertaining to collective bargaining pursuant to RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one forty-four B. And it will take 20 minutes. And again, we may, uh, so we will come out of those sessions back, uh, to adjourn for the day pending action that needs to be taken. So, all right.
So do I need to leave this, uh, Skype meeting open or?
No. So you can exit the Skype meeting and then Mike will send us a private invite for the closed sessions. And then we'll, we can dial back into this Skype meeting afterwards.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.